Good afternoon and welcome to the joint meeting of the Chatham Select Board, Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board of Trustees, and the Shellfish Advisory Committee. It is February 9, 2021. This is a remote participation only meeting. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anyone else is recording the meeting, please notify me. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 20 -- yeah, okay. I have a big mess up with my meeting notes. I think it's March 20, 2020, Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30, section -- I can't remember right now. It's 18, thank you. And the governor's March 12, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Chatham Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. Every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 1-508-441 -- 945-4410, sorry. Word salad today. Conference ID 134208467, or join the meeting online via Microsoft Teams through the link in the posted agenda. While this is a live broadcast and simulcast on Channel 18, despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. So right now, I'm going to roll call the Board of -- the Select Board and at the same time, the Affordable Housing Trustees. Board Member Kokolas.
Present.
Board Member Metters.
Present.
Board Member Dankins.
Present.
Board Member Nacastro.
Present.
Housing Trustee Bean.
Present.
Housing Trustee Story. Okay. Housing Trustee Story isn't on. So we have a quorum on both the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Trust. Now I'm going to turn to Chairman Jamie Basset of the Shellfish Advisory Committee. Would you please poll your committee to establish a quorum?
Yes, thank you, Chairwoman Davis, and thank you for inviting us to this meeting. I will now poll the members of the Shellfish -- to establish a quorum. John Gary. Jeff Haner.
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Pat Vreeland.
Here.
Bob Davis. Bob Davis. Barry Greco. John Kenaway.
Present.
Okay, so we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. I'm going to first -- this week's meeting is a little complicated. We have two executive sessions before we have our regular meeting. And as we proceed before the motion, I just want to let everybody know that we will be going into executive session prior to our regular meeting. We will return to this meeting just the Board of Selectmen. So could I have a motion to enter into the executive sessions, please? Dean's pros -- yeah, go ahead.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah. Going to offer the motion. Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen -- I'm sorry, the Select Board and the Affordable Housing Trust trustees go into executive session in two respects. First, an executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23b, Number 6, to consider the purchase exchange taking lease or value of real property or an private property acquisition for affordable/attainable housing. If such discussion may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the governmental body with return to -- by the Select Board to open session and no return to open session by Affordable Housing Board of Trustees.
Thank you.
And second, do you want to take a vote on that first?
Yeah, I -- yes, I think so. Second.
Second.
Okay, let's take a roll. Peter.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
Corey.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Okay.
We need to hear from the two trustees.
And Trustee Bean.
Aye.
Okay. Trustee Story. Okay, no one hear them. All right, go ahead. We --
My second part of my motion, or a second motion, yes, is to go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23b, Number 3, discuss strategy with respect to litigation for Ann Monomoy Refuge Western Boundary dispute. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the governmental body, with return to -- by the Select Board to open session and no return to open session by the Shellfish Advisory Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I'll take a roll call. Selectmen -- Board Member Dankins.
Aye.
Board Member Nacastro.
Aye.
Board Member Metters.
Aye.
Board Member Kokolas.
Aye.
The chair says aye. Okay, I will poll the Shellfish Advisory Committee. Chairman Basset. Chairman Basset. Okay, Chairman Vreeland, I mean, a member of Vreeland.
Aye.
Member Gary.
Aye.
Member Haner.
Aye.
Member Kenaway.
Aye.
Member Davis. Member Greco. Okay, folks, we're going to go into executive session. Each one of the committees has a separate meeting room. You've been instructed on how to do that. As the motion mentioned, the -- we will return from both executive sessions after we have conducted our business and return to this room, just the Board of Selectmen. So stay tuned, folks. We'll be back.
Good evening. We're back from executive session and it's my apologies that we're running at 7:15. We did have some substantial discussions on our plate for this evening. So, we're back and right now I will take a roll call of the Board of Selectmen to reestablish that we have a quorum. Board member Dinkins.
Present.
Board member Matters.
Present.
Board member Kokolos.
Present.
Board member Castro.
Present.
Okay, we have a quorum. All right, so our first order of business tonight, and before we get started, I do want to just mention one thing. If you are, I'm going to ask that if you're on your computer and phone, please mute your audio. But if you're on a computer, if you could disable your video, it'd be helpful. You may, you know, you may think it's, we don't see you, but we see you prepping your dinners, we see you lounging and things like that, and I don't think you want us to see that. When you're ready to speak, you may enable your audio, but it just will make it more comfortable for everybody involved who want to see the, you know, who are viewing the meeting. Anyway, so we have, our first order of business tonight is to approve meeting minutes of January 26th and February 2nd. First, could I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 26th?
Madam Chair, Peter, I move that we approve the minutes of January 26, 2021.
I think Corey beat you to the punch. You want a second, Peter? Okay, all right. Are there any edits or additions to the meeting minutes? Corey, hands up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just being, I guess, picky, I know we're still trying to clean up a couple of things with the transition to our new title. But on page one, on the very bottom, it says Board of Selectmen, just update that to Select Board.
Okay.
And then in the body itself, we have several times where, like on page five, the top says Vote of Board of Selectmen. And, you know, we have this on page seven, too. I would suggest that we did like in the, what we did actually in the next set of minutes and just replace all those with Roll Call Vote. Keep it Roll Call Vote and keep it simple. So, that's on page five, two on page seven, and one on page eight.
Thank you, Corey.
And one on page 10.
All right. Thank you very much. Noted. Any other edits or comments or changes to the meeting minutes of January 26th? All right, I see none. So why don't we go ahead and vote? Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Chair says aye. Meeting minutes approved for January 22nd, 26th, excuse me. Okay, a motion to approve the meeting minutes of February 2nd, 2021. Do I have a motion?
Shall move, Madam Chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And, okay, any additions, edits, or comments? Dean?
Yeah, just one on page four.
Go ahead, Dean.
On page four at the bottom, third line up from the, from the bottom, the sentence that begins, he said the entirety of the property does need to be developed. I think it should read, "does not need to be developed."
Correct.
That's my only edit.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you. Page five, second paragraph, the last sentence. He suggested that land could be swapped for other land close to village centers, not closed to village centers.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Any others? I'm seeing none. Let's vote to approve the meeting minutes of February 2nd. Dean?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay, meeting of February 2nd approved, five to zero. All right, so this is the time when I, oh, okay, we have public announcements and agenda item requests. Do we have any from the board? Dean, your hands up. Do you have a?
I, I don't have any.
Okay. Any agenda item requests or public announcements? Corey?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll make this really quick because I know we have a long evening ahead of us. I'm being optimistic. I know we've sent out the list of questions to MassDOT following the West Chatham conversation. If and when, I stress when, they do respond, will we put that on our agenda just to discuss on the board level our next steps? Thank you.
Okay. Any others from the board? Any other, are there any public announcements or agenda item requests from the remote participants? If you are on Teams app, raise your hand. If you are on the phone, you may speak out and say your name to be put on a roll list. Okay, I'm not hearing any. All right, thank you. So, this is a time when we're going to review the meeting agenda and the public participation policy. Our new business tonight, we'll have a coronavirus update from Dr. Dunkinson and our town manager Jill Goldsmith. And then after, we will do public comments on the business and agenda items. And those include the waterfront project at 90 Bridge Street, the Coast Guard boathouse review proposal, and our fiscal year operating capital budget review, and it will be natural resources this department this evening. So per our public policy, I'm going to place a hard five minutes on a public comment on any of their business agenda items because of the substance of participation tonight. When you are, when you, when you do speak, please state your name and the item you're going to comment on. Then we'll go into the business discussion items only. And after that, again, we'll have public comments on the business agenda items, limited to five minutes per person. And then final comments from the board before we adjourn for the evening. All right, so our first order is the coronavirus update from Dr. Dunkinson. Dr. Bob, it's been a week.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Recognizing the lateness of the evening and the full agenda you have, I will keep this relatively brief. Right now in Barnstable County, as of this afternoon, we had 963 cases of COVID-19. That was an increase of 24 cases from the previous day. Over the last week and a half or so, we had very low counts, and then we had an upsurge for a couple of days. But now we're back down into the, you know, the 20 range, so hopefully that continues. We have currently have 361 deaths on Cape Cod. That is up three from the previous day. In Chatham, we currently have 246 cases, and we've had 22 deaths. And as we've talked about previously, a significant number of those deaths were attributed to Liberty Commons. They're not attributed to Liberty Commons, but occurred at Liberty Commons because of the issues they had with COVID-19 from roughly mid-December to mid-January. We had 106 cases in January, which we've talked about before. That was our worst month to date since the pandemic. So far in February, we have had 28 cases. I'm optimistic, though, that we are now at the tail end of the surge here. And hopefully for the rest of February, we will see a decline in cases. We're already seeing that at Liberty Commons. They no longer have any patients in their COVID-19 ward. The last ones moved out over the weekend, which was great news. I'll dispense with showing the graphs tonight, but just quickly, we have seen in the last week and a half or so in Chatham, a shift in the demographic to much younger folks being indicated as positive as opposed to the older demographic due to Liberty Commons involvement. So we've seen a lot of cases recently in basically the 39-year-old and younger demographic. We've had quite a few cases, and when I mean quite a few, you know, five, six, seven cases recently in the, in the younger than 10 demographics. So we're seeing spread among, you know, youngsters, if you will. And the other thing we've noticed quite succinctly is in the last, you know, week or 10 days, we've seen a lot of household spread. And we've talked about this before, both at the state and the federal level, or the state and the national level, that the primary reason for an upsurge in cases is within households. And we have seen that here, right here in Chatham. In the last week and a half or so, we have seen two or three cases where we see three, four, five, upwards of six people in the same household coming up positive. So it just reiterates again, you know, forego the birthday parties, forego the sleepovers. Hopefully, everybody watched the Super Bowl the other night, you know, appropriately because it's clear that, you know, household spread is what's driving a lot of what's going on. And then the final thing I just wanted to touch on is there were two clinics that went online for registration today in Barnstable County, one at the Melody Tent, one in Eastham. I could tell you that all the slots that were available filled up within about 30 minutes of that going live at nine o'clock this morning. I was watching one of the sites and just watching the numbers drop as appointments were made. The county is increasing the number of doses they're able to get out of each vial. So even though the, right now, they're getting 975 doses basically from the state, and they did receive another shipment of that today. So I anticipate there will be an announcement of further clinics for next week. But they're basically getting, you know, probably six or seven doses out of each vial that were originally intended for five. And that's not saying they're, they're shortchanging anyone. It's just they're becoming more efficient and they're getting a better quality syringe to be able, basically be able to get every last drop that's in those vials. So, you know, we will continue to push information out. We will continue to post information on the website and get it out through Channel 18 as more on Cape clinics are scheduled. And hopefully, we'll be announcing soon more clinics coming here next week. We have, for Chatham alone, we have put in a request to the state for a vaccine, specifically for Chatham. Whether or not we will be getting that, or it's included as part of what the state is currently sending for Barnstable County as a whole, that remains to be seen. We have some indication that we may not get individual town allocations, if you will. But we're still working that with VNA and the county as well as the state. So we'll keep people apprised as quickly as we can. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Shereen, you're muted.
Any questions from the board for Dr. Dunkinson? None? Okay. Any questions from the remote participants for Dr. Dunkinson?
Chair Davis.
Yes, go ahead, Gloria.
It's Gloria Freeman on the telephone.
Go right ahead and speak. Yep.
Thank you. If I could take a very few minutes to say that I was one of the lucky people who got an appointment at Cape Cod Melody Tent for tomorrow, my daughter was able to get it for me. But I have to say that I'm feeling guilty about having the appointment because so many other people, 75 years or older, failed to get one. It reminds me of the 2012 movie, The Hunger Games, where young people are pitted against one another in a death match. In our case, people 75 years and older are being set against one another in a life-or-death effort to get a vaccine. It isn't right. I know you know it is not right. But I encourage you, each of you, to take action, to contact the governor for more vaccine to be brought to the Cape. Don't just leave it to staff or our town manager, who I'm sure are doing their very best to serve and protect townspeople. Please do whatever you can to get more vaccines to the Cape and Chatham or regional facility. And I think what Dr. Dunkinson just told us is helpful, and I'm so glad about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. I'm glad that you were able to get a vaccine. And I'm just going to say, if you can get the appointment, take it and be one of the ones that is vaccinated. Elaine, your hands up?
Yes, thank you. I just had one comment because I'm not, I don't qualify, but I was checking it for other people. I think there is, Barnstable County must have a software problem. I think I had heard that they thought they did at some point. First of all, when this came live, a lot of people couldn't get onto it. The site calls for you to check vaccination senior and your location. When you do that, it did not show up. The only way Melody Tent showed up is if you didn't say vaccine and senior. I could get everywhere else in the state. And then I wrote Bob and mentioned this to him, and he said, well, you have to put in the date of the vaccine. Well, a lot of people don't know that Eastham was only available on the 12th and that you have to put in the date because you don't have to do that for any other site. I think we have to work on that site so that if you put in your ZIP code, the Melody Tent and East, I never did find Eastham. It never showed up on my computer. So I would hope that they work on that so that when people go online, they follow the directions of the site, which says vaccine senior, and Melody Tent will show up. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The state is aware of issues with the site, and they are, they are working on it as well as the county is also working on it.
Okay. Any other questions from the remote participants? Okay, well, I just wanted to add to this a little bit. Dr. Bob, if you'll indulge me so that people understand what kind of effort that the community is doing on behalf of trying to get vaccines. I'm working on the COVID Task Force, and I'm in collaboration with representatives of county health, the Cape Legislative Delegation, fellow selectmen, town managers, Regional Transfer Authority, Cape Schools, Business Cultural and Childcare Community, and even National Seashore. And we're all weighing in on advocating for testing and vaccine infrastructure programs. I know the town manager probably sits on a, on a committee or sits on a, has the same sort of setup with her counterparts. And Dr. Bob and the health agents are having weekly meetings with the Department of Public Health. And it's also, we have an emergency operations center that engages and involves the, our department heads, including COA, who herself is probably doing the same with her counterparts on a, on a regional effort. So we're all out there, and we are advocating for our community as are other, other town officials advocating for their community. And we will continue to do so. And, you know, Governor Baker applauded Barnstable County for their infrastructure that was set up. But that's well and fine if you're not supplying us with vaccinations. And Rep. Peak is working on that, as well as Senator Sears on our behalf. But I do want to have people, if they want, to jot down this number. And if you've got a pencil available, this is Governor Baker's phone number, And advocate for more vaccines on our behalf as well. Okay, thank you. So we're going to move on to the town manager and for her COVID update. Jill?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We had a call with Lieutenant Governor, as well as the Assistant Commissioner of Public Health today. We have these calls every other week, and they, they heard a lot from town managers, mayors, and so forth. And especially about Cape Cod, about getting the vaccine here. So what Bob reported about the opportunity possibly of Chatham being able to administer our own vaccines, it's a possibility, and it's something that we're advocating very hard for. Other than that, I have nothing new to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Any questions for our town manager? Elaine, I see your hands up.
I apologize, I didn't lower it. I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll lower it. I got it. All right, so if there's no other comments, thank you, Jill. Thank you, Dr. Duncanson, for your report this evening. All right, our next item is public comments on the business agenda items. And again, in accordance with our public policy, we have five minutes per person to comment on the agenda items that you wish to. I've asked select board member Dykens to be my timer tonight. And he's going to let me know when five minutes is up so that we can concentrate on doing the business of the meeting. So again, I'm looking for folks to weigh in on the business agenda items that are waterfront project, 90 Bridge Street, which has a 35% design review, the Coast Guard Boathouse review proposal by Private Party for acceptance of donation. And then finally, the fiscal year 2022 operating capital budget review, natural resources. So if you can start raising your hands in the Team app or call out your name if you're on the phone, I'll start a call, a roll call. Okay, I see that Michael Westgate has his hand up. Michael?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
I can, yep.
I just want to confirm that you've got the statement from the South Coastal Harbor Plan Committee in your packet?
Yes, we didn't have it included in our packet, but we did circulate it amongst the select board members. So we do have that. And if you want to know, you want to give us a general state, the public general overview of what was in it, that would be helpful.
The committee met and considered all the documentation that was before you from your last consideration on the 90 Bridge Street, on the coastal, on the Coast Guard building. And we voted unanimously, seven to zero, to support your acceptance of the Coast Guard building and for its reuse as a upweller building at 90 Bridge Street. It's actually in the harbor plan. It was approved by annual town meeting and by the Commonwealth back in 2005. This specific building should be preserved as a, as a little part of Stage Harbor. It's an adaptive practical use for an upweller. There is a difference in cost, obviously. And it might seem a little bit daunting. It's 5.5 million total versus $4.7 million, according to Dr. Duncanson's numbers, for about a $765,000 difference. We feel confident, and I'm not speaking for the committee now, in terms of fundraising, between federal, state, foundation, and private sources, there should be ample support. In talking with people, both within town hall and outside in the community, I found no organized support, organized opposition, and a great deal of support for it. And I think it's a bit of a miracle that the building still exists. It's thanks to David Doherty and Edward L. Joel and Bob Duncanson that the building is still to be accepted. And we urge you to do so.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, our next speaker is, I only see it as Mike. So Mike, if you could say your full name and what you will be speaking to. Mike?
Sure, Mike Thompson.
Hi, Mike.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to address the Boathouse, which is listed on the agenda as a donation. But the Community Preservation Committee has received an application for approximately a quarter of a million dollars for town CPA funds as a down payment for this donation. My committee was exhorted to approve the funds for this move, but that seems irresponsible without a plan, without a plan approved by the select board and without seeing funding for the overall project, including private funding, which the committee generally requires for, for projects. Anyway, here is my overview of CPA funding issues. The good news is that CPA funds can be used to acquire, move, and rehabilitate a historic building. The only condition is that the building must be either on the state register or the Historic Commission has to declare it significant in the history, architecture, or culture of Chatham. So I think this passes. There are three cases where CPA funds have been used to move buildings, including a lighthouse on Nantucket. There is also a Coast Guard Boathouse on Nantucket, which now houses a modern upweller and hatchery. There were no relocation costs, but that boathouse received the CPA funding of $550,000 plus private donations cited as specifically for historic restoration. Is that the cost we're looking at? I don't know. But, so the good news is that there is a precedent for awarding very large amounts of CPA funds to restore a boathouse. The bad news is that very large funds were required to restore a boathouse. The current CPA application is for moving the boathouse for $280,000. Maybe less, those numbers are a little changeable. And we were given an estimated cost of restoration of another $350,000. But could it be worse based on that Nantucket example? I don't know. CPA funding is now dominated by affordable housing. You, you as the board, recently voted to increase the housing trust funding from $500,000 to $800,000. But my committee unanimously approved increasing that to $1 million. And I should point out that this is close to the total CPA funds available each year, including the state grant. If funding for moving the boathouse is approved, will there be another application next year for restoration, making a total in excess of half a million dollars? Or should CPA funds just be used for the preservation of the building once it is moved? There also appear to be several open questions before CPA funding could be voted at town meeting. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you for the report back from your committee. Appreciate that. The next person to speak, Ellen Briggs. Ellen?
Hi, and thank you, Madam Chairman, for recognizing me. As you know, I represent Protect Our Past. And that is a, an organization that is, has a community support for restoration of historic properties. And we've been focusing on Chatham, as you well know. The, we are doing a film about the Coast Guard Boathouse. Its story is an important maritime story for the history of Chatham. And so as you have, I'm sure, received many letters from people who are supporting, there is a ground swell of interest to support the, to support the town accepting this as a gift. I know that there are financial questions. Mike from the CPAC has brought them up. I was particularly pleased with Michael Westgate's report. I think that you will find that the public sector will step up to help with this situation. But right now, I think it's really valuable for this town to accept it as a gift, showing public support for the value of maritime history in this town. We've lost too many things. I'm sure you're tired of hearing of it. But it is ever-present on people's minds. So here's an opportunity to turn that around. So I urge you all to accept it as a gift and know that the community will come together to help with the, the cost of creating an upweller. And then the suggestion has been that, that the walls actually can be a museum telling that maritime history. So now you have the public coming in, learning about shellfishing and supporting self-shellfishing with this as an upweller, as well as learning the story of the maritime history of this, this wonderful town. So I'm hoping that you all will see through this and see it as a public gift to this town. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ellen. And you did note that we did receive several, several emails in support of the Coast Guard station. I'm sure we'll discuss it a little further during the business agenda. Our next speaker is Bob Davis. Bob Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm speaking this evening as an individual, though I'm a member of the Shellfish Advisory Committee. I'm speaking in favor of the town of Chatham accepting the gift of the Coast Guard Boathouse with three conditions. Condition one, that it be used as the upweller at the proposed 90 Bridge Street location. The town should not accept this gift without a designated and supported use. And those uses are limited. The site must have water access and be available. Examples include Boathouse at Harding's Beach, New Harbor Master Facility, or Shellfish Upweller. By process of elimination, an upweller is the best choice. Condition two, that the gift and its associated costs, example, relocation, storage, renovation, should be seen as part of the overall 90 Bridge Street project. A comprehensive public-private partnership should include funding from Boathouse Preservationists, Community Preservation Funds for Restoration, the Town of Chatham earmarked funds. If everyone steps up to the plate, the incremental cost to return the boathouse would be in the range of $50,000 to $100,000. Condition three, that the select board decision to accept the boathouse be separate and apart from its proposal to be used as a clubhouse for Montmore Yacht Club. This idea is at best premature and at worst, not viable. Having received their February 7 letter as a member of the yacht club, it read as a fait accompli. Yet as a member of the Shellfish Advisory Committee, there was no discussion of any kind regarding the proposed collaboration. Nor is there clarity as to membership support, design requirements, or costs. These complexities would only further, further delay what is now a five-year project. In summary, the gift of the Coast Guard Boathouse affords unique and timely opportunity to not only preserve a piece of Stage Harbor history, but also to preserve the future of Chatham shellfishing. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Bob. Okay, are there any other public participants that would wish to speak to any of the matters in our business agenda? Okay, I'm not seeing any this evening, so we're going to move on. Thank you for the comments. So our first order of business tonight is the waterfront project, 90 Bridge Street, 35% design review. Dr. Duncanson?
Yes, good evening, and thank you, Madam Chair. Included in your packet was a memo which outlines the status of the 90 Bridge Street project. This project has been multi-years in the making. We held a number of meetings, many meetings, with the three waterway-related committees, Waterways Committee, the Shellfish Advisory Committee, as well as the Antlities Cove Committee. And we brought a proposal for the 90 Bridge Street to the Board of Selectmen. You asked us to go back and kind of rework the project, which we did. And we brought, came back to you in 2019 with a revised proposal, which was subsequently endorsed by the Board of Selectmen. And we were authorized to proceed in the next step, which is detailed design estimating and permitting. So we're here tonight to share with you the 35% design plans, which have been completed, as well as a proposed, or the current cost estimate based on those 35% design plans. And that work has been funded both with money from the waterfront bond issue as well as a $295,000 grant that was received from the Seaport Economic Council. So if you'll bear with me, I will share my screen again, and I will pull up the current site plan for 90 Bridge Street. So hopefully, everybody can see the current 35% design plan. And basically, this is not very dissimilar from what the board and the public have already seen when we did the conceptual design for 90 Bridge Street. Probably the newest addition is a bulkhead around the site, the waterfront, the waterfront side of the site, which basically provides stability. Because right now, the existing rocker eventment there, it has no footings, if you will. And by providing the sea And by providing the seawall, we provide that stability for a number of things, including enlarging the site marginally to increase the parking. It provides the ability to dredge on the seaward face of that to gain some additional water depth, which will make maneuvering larger boats viable. You see a small extension onto the existing timber pier, which does not extend very far out. And really, while it's being used currently quite a bit by commercial fishermen and others for offloading, you know, it suffers from its small size, if you will. So we propose as part of the 35% design to increase that and then put a gangway off to a float on the Stage Harbor Marines side of the property. And then probably the biggest area that you see here is the new pile-supported deck with a, the upweller building that basically cross-touched area in the center. And that deck area would be surrounded on basically three sides by floats. And the one on the northeast side towards the bridge would be a handicapped accessible ramp to get folks from the deck area down onto the floats. One of the things that we're looking at is the floats along the seaward face. We, instead of putting in regular floats, we would basically put in flupsees, which are shellfish-growing floats that have capabilities and that people could also walk on and tie up to and whatnot. And then finally, the, the last major component is a public restroom facility, which would be in approximately the same position where the existing shed is. And that would be connected to the sewer, because as you probably know, we are bringing sewer down Bridge Street because of some issues with the water main. And so to avoid tearing the road up more than once, we're going to go ahead and put sewer in along Bridge Street at the same time. So we would have sewer at this location. In the conceptual design, we had envisioned a composting toilet, because at the time, we were unsure of the timing of sewer. But now that we know sewer is coming, we will go ahead and put a regular restroom facility in there. And so just one other thing, or a couple of the things I wanted to show you. This is the schematic at the 35% design of what the upweller building would look like. Basically, a 30 by 60-foot building, shingled to look the typical Cape Cod look. We are anticipating it would have dormers on the upstairs to allow light in. We're also planning for solar panels to reduce overall costs. So this just gives you a current idea of what the building would look like. It would have large garage doors, so we could open up the facility to maintain its, its educational purpose, where we bring in groups and whatnot to show them what the upweller does and what it looks like. And, you know, we open those doors in the summertime for visitors to take a look in. And then the, the final thing that I wanted to touch on is the cost. And so I'm currently showing you the current 35% design cost with a purpose-built building at roughly $4.7 million. And we've outlined here the various costs. Site preparation and erosion controls, the bulkhead, the T-pier extension, the upweller pier, the floating docks, the restroom, the upweller fit-out, which is the internal components of the upweller, and then a dredging allowance. And then we've also monetized the mob, demob costs, contingencies. We've built in some inflation as well as additional engineering. There were a couple items. The 2019 opinion of probable cost was not this high. But there are items that are now included that were not included in that previous cost estimate. Things like site preparation and erosion control, incorporation of the flupsees in the floating docks around the upweller, the upweller fit-out, which as you can see here, is, is a little over $500,000. And in 2019, the contingency was only 10%. We're carrying 20% now, because we're only at the 35% design. And then the second column that I just wanted to touch on, as we were completing the 35% design, the issue of the Coast Guard building came up. And so we, as the board knows, because we've talked about it previously, we had our engineers, as well as Palmeroy Associates, undertake a due diligence inspection of the Coast Guard building when it was still up and hull. And they provided a report to us that, yes, it was feasible to utilize the Coast Guard building as an upweller. And they indicated the potential cost for doing so. And so what you see in light blue here, we have a relocation cost that they estimated at about $360,000. Storage for 18 months at, at $5,000 a month. Demolition from some components of the Coast Guard building, primarily the old, there's still remnants of the old piers attached to the bottom of the building that obviously would come off. And then it would need some structural improvement, as well as renovations, such as a new roof and, and windows and whatnot. And as part of that, they included a 25% contingency for use of the Coast Guard building. And so were the Coast Guard building to be used based on the due diligence inspection? The cost of the 90 Bridge Street proposal is increased to $5.5 million. Hopefully, we have, not hopefully, we do have representatives of both the Engineers' GEI on the call tonight, as well as Palmeroy Associates. So at this point, I think the easiest thing to do is address any questions from the board.
Thank you, Dr. Dunkinson. I have a couple of questions, because I'm really still concerned about the, the tier float extension. I know that when, and I, I know that we approved the design in theory a while back. But I remember in Waterways Committee, there was expressed concern about the, the T, the T float and its impediment to the marina next door as far as some of their larger boats getting into their slips. Was that addressed in the design?
Yes, we've, we've scaled back that float and the pier extension considerably from what it was back in the conceptual design. At various points during that discussion, we had a pier extension that went out almost 60 feet and was much closer to the property line. So we have taken those concerns and scaled everything back while still trying to provide a facility that's useful, that doesn't impact the marina next door. So yes.
So are we, okay, are we building that pier dock and everything to accommodate commercial offload of fishing vessels?
Yes, we would be. That's, that's one of the criteria that we've been working with, is not only could it be used for the recreational public, but it could also be used for the commercial industry, because, you know, when Town Meeting bought this property, it was basically sold that it was going to be a multi-use facility. As you know, we have rebuilt the trap dock in Stage Harbor, which is now, you know, the primary offloading facility, if you will. But this could be a backup facility if, you know, if trap dock was, was busy and was all tied up, this would be another location that could be used.
All right, I just, again, I'm not sure if that's a duplicating effort here for the, for the harbor, to have a commercial offload at this site. I've still, I'm not a real, in, in favor of that. I think that we satisfy that need for the trap dock.
Yeah, Shereen, if I could. One, one thing that, that it's important to mention for both the board, as well as members of the public. These things, everything that's shown on this plan does not necessarily have to be built from day one. These things could be phased, these items could be phased in over time. And, you know, the design may change going forward, further. You know, this is only 35% design. You know, and we were tasked with designing it and then getting it permitted. We haven't even begun the permit function yet. But it could be that, you know, on paper, that the T-pier extension is shown, the float is shown. But that'll be up to a decision later as to whether or not all those components are ever actually built. I mean, we do have input from folks that they'd like to see all those things. But again, whether they have to be built all for day one, or they're phased in over a period of time, or there's, you know, they're scaled back or changed as demand goes. You know, the 90 Bridge, sorry, the trap dock is relatively new. It's only been in use this summer. After we see a couple of years, whether or not, you know, it satisfies all the need, you know, then a decision could be made whether or not some of these components are ever actually built.
I appreciate that, because I do want to remind everybody that the Board of Selectmen did vote to have priority on the site be the upweller. When we talked about the design components and everything that we had, I think we actually took a vote to make sure that that was a priority on this project going forward. So a phased approach sounds a real, is a feasible consideration in looking at the, at the plans. Peter, you have your hand up. Do you want to speak next? And you might be muted.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Bob, my, my first, I had like four questions that may be simple. But my first question had to do with what Shereen just mentioned on all of those. The probable cost didn't include a whole bunch of things, which were, which, which you enumerated. And I, I, I appreciate your, your comments as far as a phased approach and, and looking at it, because I too believe the upweller should be a priority. When's the expected date of, of the final design? Let me give you these three, whatever. And that would, I guess, include the bid package and, and so forth. And when do you need a decision on whether or not we build a facility or we put the boathouse on it? Historic boathouse?
I will answer the, the last question first, if you will. We would like to get a decision on the Coast Guard boathouse as quickly as possible. Because right now, I've instructed the engineers that until we know whether or not the Coast Guard boathouse is a go or not on this location, that we really shouldn't spend a lot of time and effort and money pursuing the plans. We've, we've designed the 35% with a purpose-built building, basically a new building on the site. We have our cost estimates. Depending on which way the Coast Guard boathouse goes, we can either move forward with those plans and, and basically continue the design of a new building, or we would step back a little bit to revise the design based on the Coast Guard boathouse. The design will not need a lot of change if the Coast Guard boathouse would be, you know, chosen for this site, because the footprints basically are the same. We were planning a concrete deck where the building will be anyway. So it's just a question of, do we put the concrete deck in and then build a new building up from there? Or do we basically just bring the shell of the Coast Guard boathouse in and plop it on that concrete deck, if you will? So, but we'd like to have that decision as soon as possible, so we know what direction we're going to be moving forward in. In terms of completing the design, you know, we're at 35% design now. We'd need another couple of months to get the design further along and get to the point where we're able to submit to the permitting authorities. You know, especially because of the upweller being a new overwater pile-supported structure for which there are no permits. You know, the permitting just for that could take a year. So, you know, we'd hope to be in a position that we could start seeking permits by this summer and have the permits then in place a year, you know, in summer 2022, with construction potentially starting in the fall of 2022.
Okay.
That's a rough outline.
Thank, thank you, Bob. Madam Chair, just one follow-up. The 25% risk factor, contingency, that's rather high, or 20%. And then 25% on, on the other side for the Coast Guard. Could you talk to that just a little bit? Because normally, it's, you know, 15% is, is a high end.
Yeah, 25% is not unusual at a 35% design level. And then as you go further into the design, the contingency is lowered as, as things become more definitive. And generally, by the time we get to the final design and we're going out to bid, we're carrying a 10% contingency. So you're right, it is, it is high at this point, but based on where we're at in the design process, that's not unusual.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Peter, Dean, your thoughts? Dean, you might have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I had my phone muted. I have a number of questions. So let me just start. It's hard to evaluate the 35% design without reference to the proposal to put the Coast Guard boathouse on there. And you've even got the comparison of the numbers. So I'm going to trip into that area as well, if that's okay. I'm not going to talk about the yacht club proposal per se. We're going to hear about that, I think, in the next agenda item. So we heard, you, you mentioned, Bob, that you can put solar panels on this new building. Is that going to be possible on, on the boathouse? If the boathouse were used? Assuming you could get it, that approved by the, the Historical Commission.
Right. Based on the fact that there are dormers on the Coast Guard boathouse, we don't think that solar panels will be as viable. That would be one of the things that the engineers, you know, if, if the direction was to use the Coast Guard boathouse, that is one of the things the engineers would be taking a look at to see whether or not it really made sense, given the limited roof area on the Coast Guard boathouse for solar panels. So that, that is one of the outstanding items at this point.
I was also, that's an interesting observation. I was wondering whether the, 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 the condition of the, of the timber on it would tolerate, tolerate it or the roof.
Yeah, that would, that would have to be evaluated. You know, we do know that the Coast Guard boathouse is pretty well-built as, as they were back in the '30s. But that, that's another issue that, not only the square footage available, but also the roof structure. That's not to say the roof structure couldn't be beefed up, because it is open inside, if you will, under the rafters. So they, you know, you could sister additional rafters to the existing ones, you know, if you needed that. But that's one of the things the engineers would evaluate.
How about the, the boathouse? And I've seen some old pictures of it. Was originally painted red, white, and blue doors. Does the condition of the building allow for that? If, if we're going to bring it back here and restore it, it would seem to me it would make sense to repaint it to its original colors, just as the one in Nantucket and the one in Cuddyhunk are. Is this building susceptible or amenable to that? Do we know?
We haven't really had any discussion yet regarding painting of the building. You know, I, I think the current thought is a red roof, as it historically had, a white building, and then kind of that seafoam green on the doors, as Coast Guard boathouse has frequently had. But we haven't had any, you know, we haven't gotten to that level of the detail, if you will, yet.
I know there is the engineer on this call. I don't know if anyone, he or Mr. Palmeroy want to chime in on any of these questions, but...
Yeah, we should have Dan Williams from GEI on the call, as well as Rick Palmeroy.
Dan Robbins is here.
Rick Palmeroy is here.
Yeah, either one of you want to comment on the questions from this, uh, Select Board Member, DeCastro?
Well, I think that, this is Rick Palmeroy. Bob's been doing a great job so far. Dr. Dunkinson, excuse me. But the, certainly, the, the plan, the concept that we were looking at as far as the siding goes, the roofing material would need to be replaced. It requires replacement. And the siding is in pretty good shape throughout the building. So there would be some patching involved with that. But that's not to say that, that it cannot be painted. It's just, at this point, it's in a natural state.
Okay. How about, as I understand it, the original location or site of the, of the boathouse was on land. I know it had, I know it was a long pier. So we're now going to put it over piles. Does that have any impact on the longevity of the structure if we use the boathouse in that, that particular siding? Does anybody have a comment on that?
Sure. So initially, the, the Coast Guard boathouse was located on piles. It actually, when they moved it, they cut the piles off and lifted it off of the piles. And so it was exposed on the bottom. The way that we're looking at approaching this, it would have modifications to the bottom there and its flooring.
One of the public comments suggested, and we've seen this in emails as well, using it, using the boathouse as a, in part as a museum. And I know we have a proposal from the yacht club to occupy the second floor. We have, Bob, on the plan, 11 parking spaces? That's the total number of parking spaces that would be available, right?
Uh, yes.
And one of, one of those is handicap, I think.
Yes, there would be one handicap spot. There would be one parking area for staff. And then the rest would be public parking spaces, correct.
Yeah, I would just note that as an observation in terms of the occupancy of the building. Do we know if the Waterways Advisory Committee has, has voiced an opinion on this? I know we've heard from Mike, Michael Westgate, and the, I think the Shellfish Committee has supported it. Have we heard from Waterways, have they met yet on this?
They have not met on the specific 35% design because, as you know, committee meetings right now are difficult. But the, they were very supportive of the conceptual plan back in 2019. It was ultimately brought to your board and endorsed.
They haven't met on the, on the, using the boathouse, though, have they?
No.
Okay. Is there any, is it conceivable that? And I heard Dr. Thompson before, and I hope he's still on, on the, on the call. Is it conceivable that if we were to take the boathouse and use that as the upweller and tap into CPC funds, not just for relocation and rest, and, and immediate improvements that they have already applied for? I think they've applied for, I think Dr. Thompson said quarter of a million dollars. But is it conceivable that if we could tap into those funds additionally, next year, for example, for another, let's say, $250,000, $300,000, and get a, a lot more money from private sources? That we could actually reduce the overall cost of this project because we wouldn't have to spend $400,000 for a, a new building? Is that, does, does Rick have a, you or Rick or?
Yes, that, that, that is a viable option. As, as Dr. Thompson alluded to, Nantucket has used CPA funds to the tune of a little over a half million dollars to restore their building. So yes, that is definitely an option.
Okay. And then my final comment is, I agree with the Chair. When, when this was presented to us initially, we thought the, the ticket on it was too pricey and, you know, we urged that it be scaled back a bit. And all the finance committee has had some concerns about it. I've had conversations, several conversations with Mr., with, with Stephen Daniel about it. I think unfortunately, the additional waterfront-related work brings a bit of a stigma to the, to the upweller concept. And you hear people saying, well, we're spending $4 million for an upweller, when we're really not. We're spending a half a million or a million if you throw in the, the fit. I haven't added it up. It's, it's certainly a lot less than $4 million. So I, I, I think it's important that whether we do it by phasing and considering each item as we move forward, or whether we eliminate some items now, we, we put forward something that's going to be saleable at town meeting. So those, those are my comments. And appreciate everybody's input on this. And I, I, I guess I'll make one last comment. I'm very open to bringing the boathouse back to Chatham. What I want to do is minimize, if not eliminate, impact on the, on the annual tax rate. We collect the CPC funds anyway, where the tax rate is. And there's 1.9 million in there now. And I very much appreciate what the, what the Community Preservation Committee has done in terms of advancing significant funding for affordable housing, which is a higher priority with me than, than the boathouse. But I, you know, I would like to see the boathouse saved if we can. I'd like to do it in such a way that it's a combination of private funding and, and community preservation funding as much as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thanks. Dr. Thompson's still on the call if he wants to. Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, Shereen, if I could just address one thing that Selectman Castro mentioned, and that was bringing this back to town meeting. This project would not necessarily have to go back to town meeting because this was included in the waterfront bond that was passed in 2017. So we would not necessarily be looking to bring this project back as, you know, asking for additional funds.
Okay.
Thank you for the correction. I appreciate that.
Dr. Thompson's still on the call and, and he did, and he was alluded to. So is there something you wanted to add, Mike?
Oh, I was just going to make the point that, in fact, CPA funds, funds are town money. They are raised from the property taxes. They are town money. It's not, I know there's a state contribution, but that's, that's probably only 30%. And it, it is used for other things. So it's not, not totally free money. We do have to bear that in mind, and we do have other uses for it.
Thank you. Thank you. Corey, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know it's, you know, been a long evening so far, so I'll make my comments relatively brief. You know, we've, we've reviewed this site for several years now. I would very much like to, you know, get this thing moving, continued moving forward. You know, the, the site, I want to make a comment about the site, more of a comment than a question. We have the upweller, we have the various uses proposed for the site, and we have limited parking. So I do think we need to kind of come, come to grips about what may or may not happen on this site. So we have adequate parking from a, from a number perspective and a safety perspective. We've recognized with the upweller, with an educational component, we're going to, you know, we're going to invite the public into that facility. If we move forward with the Coast Guard building as that structure, I think we just raise the bar as, as who would want to come in to, to look at this site and, and how we approach it from a volume perspective, parking, safety, the whole nine yards. So I think that just needs to be reviewed to some level. You know, I'm going to dip my toe into the next subject a little bit. And I like to get the boathouse, I, I would like to have the boathouse back in Chatham. And I know there's some comments about the upweller or nothing. I would, I would, I am more than happy to do our due diligence review on having the Coast Guard building as the upweller. But I will not limit it to that because I do recognize that, you know, we, we could accept this as a gift moving forward. But there are multiple regulatory reviews that are going to be needed for the, for this with the, 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 the site itself, the zoning board of appeals, conservation, you name it. So there's a lot of entities that are outside of the control of the Board, the Select Board. I do think there's a lot of public support. And I do think bringing the Coast Guard building into this discussion, frankly, it's going to, it's going to shift some support in favor of this project that may, didn't, they may not exist prior. So I'd like to move this forward. I don't want to delay much. I know I'll hold some further comments for the next specific agenda item on the Coast Guard building. But I do think that it's time to move this thing forward and, and, you know, that's it.
Thanks, Corey. Just as a note, Corey, you are aware, I'm sure, because you've lived here forever, as I have, that there is quite a bit of street-side parking on Bridge Street that could accommodate overflow in that area and has for a long time.
Right, we, we just got to recognize what we're going to use. And, and I, I did not mention, because I, you know, I don't know if there's ever going to be a trolley or bus scenario down the road. Jeff's getting all excited right now, I know. I don't see him on the screen. You know, we, we just got to, you know, throw these questions out there and have some answers prepared. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, point taken. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Shereen, and thanks. A lot of great comments, and I'm just, I haven't got too many questions. I do have some comments and some thoughts. I think if we have, you know, museum and yacht clubs and upwellers and commercial traffic and stuff, you know, in that one site, we are really burdening that site with a lot of potential traffic and also burdening, to be honest with you. So I do think we have to kind of think down the road, if you will, long and hard about what kind of activity to bring to bear on what really is a small site, which we've increased by going out over the water. We've also increased the complexity of the project with going out over the water and with considering bringing the Coast Guard boathouse back as the upweller itself, which I think is a neat idea, especially if, if we can get private funding and a public and private partnership cooking, and we can bring it back and rehab it. I think it's, it's certainly worthy of, of scrutiny and worthy of discussion. Certainly has generated an awful lot of support and email activity and, and its support. I, I want to remind folks, and, and I am concerned about the overall cost of the project, whether or not we have a Coast Guard boathouse on it. At 4.7, that's, I think we balked at something in the four, four range before, and here we are again at 4.7. So I think Selectman Castro's comment about, you know, let's think about the upweller and think about how we're really improving that small, that small lot with bulkhead work, et cetera. But I want to emphasize what Shereen brought up. We've just built the state-of-the-art dock right around the corner. And I, I don't, I can't imagine why we'd have to, we'd have to have commercial offloading there when we have that facility right around the corner that has hoists and, and plenty of space and stuff. So, you know, to, to build infrastructure into this site for commercial offloading, I think is duplicative, and I think it's not cost-effective. So I would not vote for that, to be honest with you. I think we need to do the bulkhead work, and I think the upweller building itself is really cool, especially if we had the, the boathouse as the upweller itself. I did have concern that we would be throwing good money after bad in terms of having the boat, the Coast Guard being improved there. But if we're going to get private funds that are going to move it and improve it, and we're not spending tax dollars, taxpayer dollars on it, then I think, one, I could certainly be convinced that it's worthy, worthy expenditure or worthy of our time. The other point I want to make is that if it takes a year or more to get the regulatory permits for this site, that means if we are considering using the Coast Guard boathouse as the upweller, then it's going to have to be stored for that much longer somewhere. And that's going to be costly as well. So those folks that are considering the, the boathouse, we have to kind of put that, put that in the equation, if you will. And I also want to make the point that whether we use waterfront monies or not, those waterfront monies need to be bonded, and the town is ultimately on the hook for those bonded funds as well. So the town does pay, pay for this facility, folks, one, you know, by hook or by crook. So the fact that it's already been approved is one thing. How we expend those funds is another. And the price tag is getting up there. I just want to make one last point. With at least the current projection, the, using the Coast Guard boathouse, it costs another $763,000 or thereabouts versus what we have currently. So you're in the five and a half million dollar range versus 4.7. So I, I would look to see the, the private folks generally raise those monies at least to, to, to make it a convincing project. And I'll end my comments there. But I think it's an exciting project. I think it's kind of an expensive one, but it's, it's unique, and it would really be unique for Chatham as well. It'd be an asset. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. So this has been a really informative discussion, I think, on this project. And I know we're going to be talking about the next, the next project. But, you know, we should be moving forward with the upweller one way or the other, and whatever we decide. But I thought it was really important that we frame out some of the possibilities for 90 Bridge Street as we were going forward with this. And appreciate Dr. Duncanson putting both those, those pieces together for us this evening. So if there are any, aren't any other questions for Dr. Duncanson on this, on this agenda item, we're going to move on to the next. And that is Coast Guard Boathouse Review Proposal by Private Party for Acceptance of Donation. And I have Dave Doherty is listed as the presenter here. And I'm sure that he has other representatives, if he could identify who they were as we go along. So David?
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before your board. As you know, I'm involved with a group whose official name is Stage Harbor Boathouse Preservation, Incorporated, which is, of course, trying to bring the former Coast Guard boathouse back to Chatham and ideally back to the shores of Stage Harbor, where it was previously located. I have present tonight is Jim Doggett, who is Commodore, the Monomoy Yacht Club. And I've asked Jack Farrell, who's the clerk and director for Stage Harbor Boathouse Preservation, Inc., to present a proposal to the Select Board that may provide all of us with a mutually beneficial plan for the return, preservation, and repurpose of the boathouse. On that note, I'll turn it over to Jack.
Welcome, Jack.
Good evening.
Hi, Jack.
Good evening, Select Board. It's the first time I've said that. Sounds good. First of all, I really like to say thank you to everyone who has participated in the discussion this evening. I can honestly say that I've learned something from each and every person, particularly Michael, Mike, Ellen, and Bob. And frankly, the comments from the members of the Select Board as well, and particularly a couple, couple of Selectmen, Select Person Dykens. So there seems to me, having listened to everything, and, and I'm sort of late to this. Mr. Doherty's really, and he and Mr. Doggett are really the experts. But coming late to it, what we seek to accomplish this evening is not to get into nailing down all of the details and specifics as to how this would take place because it is, it's going to be complicated. It's going to be challenging. We need input from professionals. We've already had input from the town manager and town council to get us started to understand the process, which is necessary to get from where we are to the possibility of the boathouse being returned and serving as the repurposed upweller. So what we're trying to accomplish this evening is to get a sense from the board that they support and want to promote the return of the historic boathouse to Stage Harbor, however that is accomplished. So that all of the work that needs to be done, all of the due diligence which needs to be done to get from where we are, that accomplishing that project task, can start in earnest. And we are not asking for the board to write a blank check. We are not asking for the board to even make a final decision as to exactly how this is all going to happen because we don't have all the details for you to even consider that. But what we do need is we need a green light to keep moving forward, to start all of the due diligence for the Monomoy Yacht Club to get more involved and start making their financial investment to get all of the information necessary to see whether this can actually take place with Monomoy Yacht Club as a private participant. So the three options which are, are being presented to the board at this point in time seem to be clearly do the, the as-designed building, have the town bring back the boathouse and absorb the expense, or to create a private-public partnership with the Monomoy Yacht Club to accomplish bringing back the historic boathouse, making it repurposed for the upweller, creating a space on Stage Harbor for the historic Monomoy Yacht Club founded in 1937, and reducing the cost to the town of the overall project. The, the cost to the town would be reduced by the financial investment of the Monomoy Yacht Club, which would then, similar to the lease arrangement up at the Marconi Museum, be used as prepaid rental amount towards the space on the second floor, which would be created for their clubhouse facilities. So we're actually not trying to create a new method of doing business here, but actually learning from and piggybacking onto the success, the great success over at the Marconi. learning from and piggybacking onto the success, the great success over at the Marconi. And basically, although they didn't have to move a building, you know, they've created space over there and finished off space and repurposed space, and the funds which they spent to do so were then applied towards their rental payments into the future. So this is the same concept which Montemoy Yacht Club is presenting to the Select Board for the consideration as an alternative method to accomplish bringing back the boathouse, incorporating it into the upweller project, and reducing the overall cost to the community. Now, several of the, the prior speakers have mentioned that, that particularly Michael Thompson, the chair for the CPC, that monies have been made available by other CPCs and likely would be made available, I believe personally, for this project, and that's why the initial application has been put in there. The Montemoy Yacht Club, in initiating this proposal, is making a commitment to invest or underwrite up to $1 million to help the community make this happen. Whatever the cost ends up being at the end of the day, what, however much they spend in order to make, to accomplish all of this, all under the supervision of the town, obviously, that would be applied towards rent on a long-term lease, exactly like the Marconi. So to not go too far, too fast into all of the details, like the color of the doors, I think we would be well-served at this point in time to look at the option of the boathouse coming back, and does the town want to further pursue Montemoy Yacht Club's helping to underwrite some of that expense in return for a lease relationship. I know it's very late in the evening, and though there are many other things I'm prepared to say, I really think that keeping it simple at this point and keeping it direct is probably in everyone's best interest, and I would be anxious to just hear any reactions from the board.
Thanks, Jack. I have a couple of questions that I, when I was reading Commodore Doggett's letter for a proposal, and it, and, you know, I'm not sure, and I'm sure that there's others that might speak to this better.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you, but I do have to speak before Jim speaks, Jim Doggett speaks. I am a member of the Montemoy Yacht Club. I haven't seen the proposal, even if it came through, I wouldn't, I wouldn't look at it. Let me, let me set, let me make a point. The first is, you know, as, as Jack mentioned, you know, there's the idea of whether we accept this as an option. Two is whether or not we'd want to put it on the, on the, on the upweller. But the third part that has to deal with the Montemoy Yacht Club is an issue that provides me a very personal conflict of interest. This, this proposal hasn't been brought to the membership, and that's fine. They can, they can bring that here. But if, if this continues, and I have to listen to it, I'm going to have to recuse myself. It wasn't on our, it wasn't in our package. I mean, I've talked to, to the state about the conflict of interest on this, but a little bit differently, and if this continues, I'd like to separate the Montemoy Yacht Club portion of this to a separate time or whatever, because I feel comfortable voting on the, on the, on the, whether, whether we accept or not, go through the discussion on the, on the boathouse, and whether or not we should put it in, on the upweller. But I certainly, I think, would be remiss if I tried to make any kind of a decision or discussion or get involved with the Montemoy Yacht Club proposal.
Okay.
So I guess I'm, okay, I ask you if we could separate them. Otherwise, I'm just going to have to accuse myself.
Well, let me ask the board how they feel about the discussion, if you want to move forward with this. How does the board feel about separating the discussion out to accepting the donation or talking about the boathouse being part of the upweller site, or, or, or shushing it out to just accepting the donation based on the merits of, of, of a further discussion? Pat's still on the call, Pat Costello. Maybe he can weigh in on this a little bit to help us guide us through the legalities of our discussion going forward. Pat? Are you still there?
I am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, certainly, any decision or determination whether to recuse oneself from a discussion is up to the individual board member, and if Peter feels he, by virtue of his membership at the yacht club, he should recuse himself, I think it's a prudent decision on his part. This is a very complicated process. There are multiple moving parts that we're looking at right now. So how viable would it be to separate the Montemoy Yacht Club from the overall discussion of the gift? I'm not sure. But if, if the board does feel it could do that and not bring into the equation the financial contributions by the yacht club or the yacht club's prospective future use of the property, then I do think Peter would certainly have no conflict of interest. But to the extent that those items are discussed as part of the proposal, he should exercise due caution in participating in the discussion.
Okay. All right. Again, I think that I would like to hear from the board on their thoughts of continuing the discussion without adding the Montemoy Yacht Club component into the discussion as we move forward, and then if we need to take it out and discuss it afterwards, we'll give Selectman Kokolos the opportunity to recuse himself, whose thoughts. I think, Dean, your hand's up next.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, it seems to me there are several layers to this, or several distinct issues. One is, do we want to accept the boathouse, period?
Yep.
And secondly, do we want to use the boathouse as the upweller? And third, do we want to use the boathouse as the upweller with the Montemoy Yacht Club piece, in, incorporated into it? With respect to the first issue, the first two issues, I think Peter, Peter participate without any issue, and it's his call. But I, I, and I'm certainly for separating them out. I, I will say, I have a hard time just taking the first issue as something that the board should make a decision of. I don't really want to make a decision on whether to accept the boathouse unless I know what we want to do with the boathouse. Otherwise, we're going to be in the same position the Board of Selectmen was in 2009, with a boathouse hanging around town and nobody knowing what to do with it. So I think issue two is the one we should be focusing on. Now, I guess, I'm, from what I'm hearing tonight, and I did reach out to Dave Doherty, we had a conversation a couple of weeks ago, which was very helpful to me, but I think what we're hearing tonight is that the proposal from Mr. Doherty and his group is intricately interconnected with the Montemoy Yacht Club proposal. If it is, then I think we can't, we can't have that discussion of issue number two. But if it isn't, then we can. And I don't see why the Selectmen, I'm sorry, the Select Board can't have, can't consider whether to take this boathouse and use it as an upweller and determine the funding of it without regard to whether the Montemoy Yacht Club proposal is part of the discussion at all. Seems to me that's a tertiary issue, and I hope I haven't muddled things up worse, but I'm, I'm certainly in favor of making it possible to have a discussion on whether to take the boathouse and what to use it for without involving the Montemoy Yacht Club piece into it.
It's almost a, yeah. Dean, it's almost a matter of having to do it that way, because based on what Commodore Doggett is presenting to us, that Montemoy Yacht Club will only be seeking approval of the, of the proposal to be part of, of, of the upweller after we have satisfied certain contingencies to them. Approval by us, successful negotiation of a lease, and then approval of HBDC exterior modifications to create a second floor. And that's only then will he bring it back to his membership for approval. So it's almost a moot point that we don't discuss Montemoy's participation at this point, based just on how they're presenting it to us. But I want to hear from the rest of the board before we proceed. So Cory, and then Jeff, and Peter's hands back up again, or it hasn't gone down yet. So, Jeff?
There you go.
Cory, I'm sorry, Cory, go ahead.
Okay. No, if we could segment this, I would, I would be more comfortable for Peter's sake.
Peter's sake.
I'm not going to be his counsel, but I'd like to have Peter participate in those items that we, that he clearly is qualified in. With the Montemoy Yacht Club, you know, discussion, when we get to that point, and I know Pat's on the, on the line, I guess I'm looking for a little clarity. I understand why they're stepping forward, and I appreciate the, you know, what, I think the spirit of what they're trying to do, and I understand the connection geographically and, and whatever, as being a partner to the, to this public-private potential venture. But I'm, I'm looking for some clarity whether, if this is a public building, town building, as, you know, do we have to do an RFP to allow any potential entity to, to do what the Montemoy Yacht Club is potentially thinking? I'm just looking for some clarity on the, on the procedure.
I think Pat or Jill could weigh in on that process, I believe. Pat?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Cory's point is well-taken. To the extent that there is certainly a lease component to this proposal, an RFP is required as a matter of law. To the extent there is work done on the property while it is affixed to town-owned land and is a town-owned structure, then the public bidding statutes and prevailing wage laws, what have you, would apply to that work, which would certainly impact the cost of the work. So those legal requirements, should I say statutory requirements, would be in play in this scenario. What could be done, however, and is done quite frequently in situations like this, is the town could, should town meeting approve it, seek special legislation to allow it to proceed with a lease arrangement with the Montemoy Yacht Club, notwithstanding the provisions of Chapter 30B that would require the issuance of RFPs. It's not uncommon for special legislation of that type to be adopted by the general court. We could also, under the unique circumstances here, petition the general court for legislation to exempt this particular project from some of the public bidding or public construction procurement requirements, should they apply as well. But in order to get to that point, that would require a vote of town meeting to authorize the Board of Selectmen to petition the general court for that legislative relief.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, my thoughts are thus. I understand the desire to bifurcate the issues into threes, and I can do that. I lose it a little bit when I know that the support of the Montemoy Yacht Club and other private sources are going to provide the funding, at least in theory, are going to provide the funding to allow us to add an additional $763,000 to this project and be able to pull it off. So I'd like to hear from Jack, if you might, Shereen, on, you know, we can't get assurances yet, at least with Peter Kokolos's participation, that they in fact would, would, you know, belly up with the other 763K at some point. I thought the timing in the Doggett letter was curious as well, so I thought, I thought those points were well-made. But I am, again, I'm open to concepts. I'm open, I'm open to the, to the concepts, and I do think it's a unique project. It would be unique on the, on the Cape. It's also, it comes with a pretty price tag that if we could decrease that overall price tag, Mr. Farrell, that would just be great.
Jack?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
One way's participation here was to facilitate the return of the boathouse and its reuse as the upwelling facility. Seeing the numbers created in the 35% cost and the numbers that GEI produced for, including the boathouse in the project, brought about a roughly $700,000 increase in cost. Thinking that the town wouldn't, wouldn't be very pleased with an already somewhat expensive project with another three-quarters of a million-dollar increase in the cost, the thought was, you know, how can we go about reducing that cost to the town? And Montemoy, from Mr. Doherty and Mr. Doggett started discussing, how could we do something to make it more cost-effective and easier, more palatable to not only, you know, the Select Board and the Finance Committee, but the taxpayers, to make this project happen and get the boathouse back where we all feel it belongs? So obviously, for, for their participation, they were saying, what, what benefit might we gain for facilitating this financially? So the obvious example was the Marconi. As you know, the Montemoy Yacht Club now is probably less than 100 yards away in the second floor, the cramped space of the Stage Harbor Marina. So to have them stay on Stage Harbor, you know, since they're founded in 1937, to bring back the boathouse and to reduce the cost to the town seemed to be a great package. Now, when I say reduce the cost to the town, based upon the numbers which you reviewed this evening, and, and their, their willing participation to go ahead and underwrite a lot of this work, at this point in time, with the numbers that have been presented to everyone, we're looking at reducing the final cost to the town of approximately $400,000 from year 4-7 with a new building down to 4-4. So there was a financial gain to the taxpayers through the participation of Montemoy Yacht Club as a private partner. As I said earlier this evening, it's, it's fairly obvious to everyone that there are three ways to go about this at this point in time, two of which were set forth in, in Dr. Duncanson's financial numbers, with the boathouse being handled completely by the town, and the third one being the boathouse coming back with the participation of a private partner. So that's what we were really trying to do. The David Doherty's initial work, and it started 10 years ago, and it's continued ever since, was to preserve the boathouse and bring it back to Chatham, preferably Stage Harbor. So that's the primary thrust of his work and of his, his goal. The people from Montemoy Yacht Club have been fantastic in trying to lend their assistance in answer to some of the questions about how the proposal was, was phrased and the timing with their membership. The Yacht Club's Board of Governors and, and Mr. Doherty are no more in the position to give enough detail to their membership to get a vote than we are this evening, to give you enough members, enough information to expect you to vote of anything other than continue your work. This might take place and it might not, but we won't know the answer if you stop working tonight. If Montemoy and the Boat Preservation Group keep working to do our due diligence, we will then have more detail, more flesh on the bones of this project, and the decision, an informed decision will be made in the future, whether it works for the town and whether it works for Montemoy Yacht Club. That decision cannot be made this evening, as we started, you know, right, right at the beginning. That's way down the road. I want to thank both the town manager and town council, who took their time to speak with David Doherty and I last week, and town council brought us up to speed with everything that he spoke to you about this evening, about special legislation, et cetera. So we're aware of all of that, that that's not news to us. That is, that is something that we learned from town council last week, and that we're more than happy to see the, the town go in that direction. So again, I think perhaps we're trying to go a little too far this evening. People feel like they're committing to something, and that's not really what the request is. So there's a lot of work to be done if the board wants to bring back the boathouse, and then a decision later on needs to be made as to who is going to be involved in bringing back the boathouse. The town, or a town with help from a private entity like the yacht club, or the town and some other type of partnership which today, you know, has not presented itself. So please don't, don't think that we have to go too far this evening, because I think that will really undermine the, the third option of any participation by the yacht club. So I hope I've answered some of your questions and concerns, and just, if I can only say And just, if I can only say to, uh, Selectman Kokolos, I feel for you, um, and I appreciate everything that you did in, in making it clear that as a member of the yacht club, you have an obvious conflict of interest here. So I'm sure Peter's being tugged in two directions right now, and, uh, I've been there. So I understand exactly, uh, what, what he's going through here, and I appreciate it, and I thank him for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Our, our concerns are, have not been to negate the, the, um, the work of the yacht club and, and the work of everybody. We're just trying to iron out where we stand here, um, and how we are to proceed. So, um, you, you, you're being very clear in helping us along that way. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, so minimally, what, well, what actions minimally do we need to do, need to take tonight, is, is what I'm?
Our agenda packet says, um, review proposal by private party for the acceptance of a donation. We have no, uh, recommended, um, action at all. That's, that's where we're at. It's pretty open-ended. There's no staff input and there's no recommendation, um, uh, action items. So it's up to us. Basically, I see it as accepting the donation could be the broad stroke. We have had discussion about accepting the donation and, and identifying it as, as where it will go. We know that we have, um, heard from many folks in the public, um, who are in support of this project. I know that both Jeff and I had real concerns about the costs in relationship to this building in, uh, to the town going forward with maintenance. Um, they're still there, but, um, again, um, we've softened the blow a little bit by understanding there may be, there may be, uh, an opportunity for, uh, for working a private-public partnership. I guess that's how I want to frame it.
Okay.
Um, if that helps. And, go ahead. Any other comment, Jeff?
No, I, I, I'm willing to make a motion to accept the donation.
Okay. I'm gonna take that motion and then I'll ask for a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, Corey, second that. Um, we'll do further discussion. Dean, your hand is up.
Yeah, Madam, Madam Chair, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna support that motion, because I think it's premature, because we don't know what we're gonna do with it. And I hate to take a vote tonight. I, maybe a majority will support that. I, I, if, if a majority votes it down, then I, I don't think that's a good message to the town. I'm thinking that, uh, in looking at the comparison of the, of the financials that were presented under the previous item, um, and if I could just bear with me, um, it is conceivable that if the boathouse were used as the upweller, we might be able to, to work these numbers in such a way allowing for public and private participation in, in, in the, um, cost of all of this, that we would either have a wash or something that's not terribly significant in terms of the increase in cost if the, the boathouse were used. And specifically, the relocation cost that the engineer put was $360,000. I heard Mr. Uh, Doherty tell the, uh, and he told me too, I think, the CPC committee that, um, he could re, have it relocated for about $240,000 or $225,000. The storage costs here are estimated at $5,000 a month. Mr. Doherty, um, told the CPC committee he could, uh, he has an arrangement with Mr. Cashman for $2,500 a, a month. The upweller building cost for a new building is $375,000. But if that were funded largely from CPC money, and, and, don't jump out of your seat, Michael, because I, I remember what, I agree with you. It is taxpayer money, but it, it doesn't impact the tax rate annually if we tap into CPC money. We, we could have a savings there in terms of the restoration of the building. So maybe it might make more sense to ask the staff to come back with, uh, a, a pro forma, a proposal, whatever, for the town to accept the boathouse and use it as the upweller and identify the sources of funding that would be anticipated for it, including a combination of public and private fund, funding. And that might include the participation of the yacht club, or it might not. Maybe there would be two, two alternat, uh, alternatives proposed to us. Um, but I, I'm very reluctant to just say, well, we'll, we'll accept the boathouse. Um, we don't know what we're gonna do with it or what, what it's gonna cost us. So, uh, again, my goal is to, is to minimize the impact on the, on the annual tax levy and utilize funds that are gonna come from private sources and, and, uh, community preservation sources realistically. And then I understand it has to be up to that committee to decide what they want to recommend, and then, and then it goes to town meeting. We can't control that. Those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. I have a question. If we accept this as a donation, and then down the road, we start to work on planning a, to be an upweller or some other site, and it doesn't come to fruition, where do we stand with, uh, David? Where do we stand with, um, are we still owning the boathouse? Do we just give it back to whomever? I mean, what would we, you know, what would be the contingency based on accepting that donation? Has there been any discussion of that?
Well, I guess I'd better ask my wife.
Okay.
I, I, I don't have an answer for that right now.
Okay.
But I, I certainly think, I'm hopeful that we'll all get together and get it back here.
Right, yeah, I got it. Um, just trying to work this out, because, um, it, it's just a cart before the horse, chicken egg scenario we're going through right now. Um, Peter, your hands up, then Jeff.
Yep.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I, I'm gonna go back and say what I did before. I understand where Dean's coming from. I don't have a problem with accepting the, uh, the, uh, the boathouse, and there's been such, uh, a, a lot of public input and a lot of discussion on private funding. You know, and I, I could, I could make the decision now. Would I feel more comfortable if staff came back with a couple of, uh, of, uh, came back with different options? Uh, yeah, I, I guess I would. But, uh, I just can't, uh, if they, they come back with an option that, that includes, you know, the Montemoy Yacht Club, then I can't be involved. If it's off on a side separately, that's, that's fine. I'm, eh, we've looked at this a number of times, and the, and the doll, and the numbers that are there. If, if, if the numbers are not contingent, which I thought Jack said upon the Montemoy Yacht Club. And oh, by the way, Montemoy Yacht Club is, from what I just heard, you know, and I know, that it hasn't gone to the membership, so they're gonna have to get a, some sort of a vote there. Uh, I, I, I'd go with the, with, with what the, the rest of the board wants, because I have a particular problem. But I want to be involved with, with, with bringing the boathouse back, to be perfectly honest. I think it's the right thing to do. And I wish I, we could get, I wish we could get, you know, the Coast Guard boat back from Orleans, but that's a different story. Uh, so anyway, I, 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 that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, well, right now, we have a motion on the table to accept the donation in a second. So that's where we're standing right now. Jeff?
Yeah, I, I think, I think the acceptance of the donation is a little bit of a, uh, you know, a little bit of a wing and a prayer, because we don't know exactly what it's gonna cost and whether it's exactly gonna be the upweller, et cetera. But I think we have a group, uh, that's been very vocal, um, this evening in via email that certainly is, is dedicated to, to bringing that structure back to Chatham in some way, shape, or form, and it does, would be really neat as an upweller. And we have a, we have leaders in our, and, and, you know, in our town that are saying they can raise money and, and assist and lower, decrease the overall cost, and they're on camera here tonight, and they're making, you know, they're, they're, they're with us. So I, I, I can, I'm gonna vote for it. I'm gonna vote for accepting the donation, knowing that these folks will do their damnedest to get, or darnedest, I should say, to get, get the money to, to, to make this project come to fruition and, and, um, and I think they need, I think they want to hear that the town is supportive, and I, I think that's up to us to do that or not.
Okay, well, we're close to taking a vote, but I hear, I see that Jack's hands up, hand is up, and then Corey's. Jack?
Well, no, I just, um, put my hand up a while back where I was getting nervous. Um, I, I think, I think you're right. I mean, you know, again, um, you know, David Doherty and his group, our group, number one primary concern is getting the boathouse back. We think the upwell is a perfect opportunity for it, and Montemoy Yacht Club, I think, has made a very generous and, and good citizenship kind of, uh, proposition here as to how they could help the town soften the financial blow to get it done. But they're, but they're right, because we spoke, we spoke about a couple of times, there's three options here. But the option that has to be decided, I think, tonight is, is the town willing to bring the boathouse back and make it, hopefully, part of the upweller project. If not, perhaps somewhere else, but hopefully focusing on the upweller project. Can we make this happen? Is there the, is there the will to make that happen? And as everyone has said repeatedly, I think in the brief time that this has gone public, you've seen that the will of the people is there, and this town always comes through.
Understand. I just want to let folks know, I keep getting people raising their hands that want to speak. Um, this is a business agenda item where it's a board discussion only, so, um, there is public comment period after, um, our, after our business agenda items are discussed. So, um, hang tight, folks, if you need to add in to anything. Corey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I think we all recognize how complicated this discussion, uh, can be and it is being. Uh, but at, at the end of the day, I'm gonna vote for this, because I do recognize, this is, this is the second chance we're gonna get to preserve the boathouse. Um, and I, I recognize there's a lot of due diligence and further discussions that need to happen, but I don't want to lose an opportunity, lose this piece of history. Um, I know we gotta, I'll, I'll steal a phrase from one of our earlier participants, you know, protect our, our past. Um, and I'm gonna be saying this down the road, we need to protect our future for other agenda items. But, um, I do think, um, I do think this is important, and, um, I, I'm gonna support it.
Okay. All right, um, then we are prepared to take a vote, um, at this time to accept the donation um, of the Coast Guard boathouse. Um, and I think we'll have a lot of contingency questions and next steps, um, as we move forward. So let's take a vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Corey?
Aye.
Dean?
No.
Peter?
Aye.
And Chair says aye. Okay, that's five zero, uh, four, one, zero. Thank you. Um, that's all we need to discuss with this right now. I think what we need to do is set another, uh, board agenda item to continue the discussion on, on where we'd want to, where we'd like to see this and, um, whether we want to partner on it. But I would encourage, um, the advocates, Mr. Doherty and Mr. Farrell, to continue discussions with, uh, with the yacht club and any other entities that are interested in, uh, working a private-public partnership at this time. I want to thank you all for your efforts this evening and your efforts in the last few weeks. I also want to thank those who've weighed in by email. This, we had, uh, almost two dozen emails over the course of the last two days. So there was a bit of advocacy and outreach that was happening within the town. I hope that they move forward with that, um, as we go forward with this project, and, uh, thank you. All right. So the next, um, thank you, Jack. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
All right. Um, next is, uh, fiscal year 2022 operating and capital budgets review. Uh, tonight, we are reviewing the natural resource department. It's a very thematic evening. And so I think our, uh, finance director, Alex, is, at Halela, is on the, in the meeting. And so I'm gonna turn it over to her for, um, for presentation. Welcome, Alex.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, recognizing, um, the late hour, I'm going to try and make this, um, fairly brief. But, um, in your package tonight, I've highlighted the, um, natural resources operating department. Um, as you are aware, over the past few weeks, we've been going through the, uh, larger departments. We started with DPW, and we have public safety. And so now, um, tonight is the natural resources department. Um, so for FY 2022, the budget is presented at, um, $1,817,337 for an increase of 1.62 over FY, um, '21. So again, this is a level-funded budget, except for contractual obligation, uh, steps and longevity obligations. Um, no new staff is proposed for FY 2022, um, as has been the case with all the other budgets that you reviewed so far. Small increases in, um, expense line items. The majority for, uh, berm monitors on North Beach and a small increase in meeting dues and travel under conservation. The harbor master division budget include, you know, has, again, small increases for longevity and wage rates for seasonal employees and a new line item in the expense, um, lines for trap dock maintenance and repairs. Uh, the coastal resources division is level-funded again, um, again, small increases. Shellfish division has two full-time employees and up to 10 seasonal employees. And I think as we've, uh, said in previous budget reviews, um, we're looking at remaining competitive with our seasonal wage rates. So we look at those every single year, um, so we can hire those seasonal employees. So again, you see some of that increase for the shellfish division, but no COLA's. Expense budget remains level to FY 2021 for shellfish. And then, um, some smaller, uh, budgets under the natural resources department, Pleasant Bay Alliance, and then the, uh, committee budget. So, um, those are the operating budgets, and I'll pause right here. Again, I know that's a very quick overview, but I'll pause here to, um, see if you have any questions on the operating budgets before we get into some of the capital.
Uh, questions on the operating budget, Peter Kokolos, and then Dean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and Alex, no, I really don't have a question. When you have a 1.62% increase in across this natural resources group, which does considerably, especially when you consider the seniors and workers, and you put the money where it should go, I believe. Um, I, I was looking for something to talk about and ask you, and there I couldn't find anything, but maybe Dean will have something. But I, I thought it was, it's a good, it's a good budget. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, Dean?
Thank you. Just one quick, uh, curious question, Alex. Under, um, and, and the, uh, item for continuing education training and seminars, it's on the first, it's on the first entry, first graph, yes. Uh, it's line 5309. So for FY '21, the budget is 500, but year-to-date, we've spent almost 12,000, and yet the budget request for next year is 500. Just seems a little curious to me to have the, the discrepancy there. Can you explain that?
Um, I would have to look at that, but looking that, that quickly, I would say that something was probably misclassified, because I don't see continuing education training seminars being almost $12,000 year-to-date. Um, it could be that that might have had something to do with some COVID costs that were, um, allocated to that cost. Uh, that's my, um,
Okay, all right, thank you. I have, I have no other questions. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, um, Alex, continue.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so moving on to some of the capital, um, items that are requested. So under section 10 in the budget book, which is the capital, um, we have $342,200 for, um, natural resources projects and $16,500 for, um, equipment, so vehicles and equipment. Um, this division, this department is, um, not requesting any new vehicles for the coming year. Um, however, some of the items that we've highlighted, uh, in the agenda report are 50,000 for the annual drainage, drainage, stormwater management, and $10,000 for conservation lands management. Coastal Resources capital request included $400,000 for dredging, of which $300,000 is contemplated as a separate standalone article and $100,000 in the annual appropriation, the annual capital budget. Um, there's also an annual request, um, of $10,000 for the town landing infrastructure. And some of these items, um, in the natural resources department, especially for the town landing and the harbor masters budget, are offset by the waterways improvement funds. So again, no impact either on free cash or the tax rate. Um, it's a dedicated funding source. And speaking of the harbor master, moving on that, again, annual request for $12,000 aids to navigation, i.e. buoys, and then, um, Mitchell River Bridge improvements, and then, um, items for the fish pier. Uh, two new items this year are the fish pier packing roof replacement for $65,200 and $50,000 for the, um, replacement of fenders and improvements to the pedestrian walkway at the fish pier. So again, a fairly, uh, level-funded budget to, um, FY 2021, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Alex? Jill, your hand's up. Do you want to add in?
I just want to add in some good news that we found out this week, that the, um, coastal resources department, Ted Keon, has, uh, submitted a seaport grant for the fish pier, the south jog improvements for about $400,000, and it's being recommended. So we should know after their meeting on, um, February 24th, whether we actually got their warrant and- And both the Harbor Master and Coastal Resources has been so great about getting seaport grants and $400,000 for final design and permitting. We'll really save money off of the tax rate. So we're really proud of that.
Wow, congratulations and well done to the Coastal Resource Department and the Harbor Master. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job. Any questions for Alex on the capital? We don't have any. Wow, all right.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much, Alex. Okay, I guess we're, that was a quick review, I guess. So our last order of business tonight is public comments on the business agenda items. This is a time when anybody can speak on the items related to our business agenda discussion. And again, this is a limited, five minutes time on your comments. So I'll just take a look. Elaine?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to comment on the boathouse. I would agree with Selectman Castro. I think there's plenty of room for sharpening the pencil and finding ways that we can reduce that cost. Someone mentioned that perhaps there's no necessity for the dock and we could do it in stages. When we think about CPC funds that are available and then private fundraising through donors, I would hope that we would not consider a partnership with anyone. This is going to be a very expensive project for the town. But I also think there's a premium to be paid by a taxpayer to preserve something like this. I would rather spend more on my taxes to make sure the town owns it 100% and that it can be used by the public, the entire building, so that if they want to rent out the second floor for a family gathering, they can do that without going through a yacht club. So I hope you do take that into consideration. And I think we could get the number down very close to a new building. And I think the historic building would be far superior. And again, I think there's a premium attached to that. And I would also hope that we don't have solar panels on it. It's kind of an anachronism if you have this beautifully restored building and then we have solar panels, unless we can put them on the back where nobody sees it. So thank you. I think it was a great discussion, but I hope we can keep this 100% for the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Are there any other discussions, any other public comments from the participants this evening? Okay, I don't see any unless there's somebody on the phone that would like to speak up, which I don't see anybody on the phone anymore, except for Dean. Okay, all right. Well, any final thoughts from the board before we go? Mine is that I think this was a pretty productive meeting and grateful for everything that we heard tonight and for the staff and their work on all the presentations. So for now, from going forward, I guess a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff. Wake up, guys. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, Cory? Motion to adjourn. Aye. Dean?
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Chair says aye. All right, well, I thank you. It's 9:12 and I appreciate everybody's participation this evening. I have a good evening and we'll see you, well, we'll see.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yes. I was going to say, we'll see the board tomorrow at the Monta Mo Regional School District Budget.